K12 dot S D dot U S. Hover over our district, then choose policies to learn more about taking an active role in your child's education.
Created using Powtoon.
Please rise and join us as pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I please have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held October 10th, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody wishing to? Nope. Thank you, ma'am. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. All right. Yeah.
Good evening. There are some, actually some, more than some, exciting things happening in the Fine Arts Department right now. Dr. Boyd Perkins is joining us this evening. He'll be telling you about some curriculum updates that we have in the Fine Arts Department, as well as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for our middle school students coming up in December. So, I won't steal any of his thunder. I'll turn it over to Dr. Perkins.
Good evening. My name is Boyd Perkins, and I'm the coordinator of Fine Arts here as of this fall, and I've had a fantastic fall coming into the school district and getting started and working on a lot of different initiatives that we have going on here. And one of my favorite things to get to do is to talk about all the positive things that we do in the Fine Arts, because there's just so many that I can talk about and cheer everyone up as we talk through all these things. We are starting a new curriculum implementation this fall, and that involves a lot of new equipment and a lot of new textbooks and materials that the teachers are now implementing, and some new approaches that they're using that's real exciting. I'm just going to highlight a couple of those for you. We have new kilns at Sioux Falls, Washington, a new kiln at Sioux Falls, Washington, also pug mills, which are the clay mixers there for working on their 3D and for their clay sculpture work out there. It's fantastic for those teachers to get a chance to do that with those students. We also have, in the middle school art program, rather than sending students home with all of these things that come home, these little art projects they come home with, we're doing, we have a new, we have iPads in every single classroom, and they're making virtual student portfolios that they'll be able to keep and their parents will be able to have and store them. Being a parent myself, I know what it's like getting those papers home all the time that you don't want to keep, so we're real excited about that. Debate season is starting this weekend, and so is Orland Turf and Theater. Theater's been going. We've already had productions in two high schools already. I should mention, there are 550 Fine Arts events throughout the school year, between the three high schools and the elementary and middle schools. So there's virtually no night where there isn't some fine art event going on in the school district. The elementary school, we purchased new iPods, gone are the CDs and gone are the stereos, and they have wireless speakers with their iPods. So now, instead of walking around and dealing with a ton of things in a big stereo, they have a wireless speaker they can plug in and pull all their music up for their students right on an iPod, which is very, very helpful for them, especially when they're between schools. We also have new electronic keyboards in the elementary classroom. Now, to a piano person, they don't always like those. However, these are very fine, touch-sensitive keyboards. They never need tuning, and the maintenance should go way down on those. Besides that, they take up a lot less room, so we're excited about that. We actually have, we're trying to figure out what to do with a lot of our pianos now, our older pianos. The South Dakota Symphony has got a great partnership in the Sioux Falls schools that I'm just thrilled to report. They are going to be in the middle schools and in the high schools doing a residency. They're also in our elementary schools. They're going to do a concert for our third graders on March 13th, where they bus in all of the third graders in the district and also in Brandon, and give them a concert at the Washington Pavilion. The conductor will turn around and work with all those kids sitting in the Washington Pavilion. You can just imagine that's packed. They do three of those concerts in one day. We also have a new initiative. It's called Linked Up, not to be confused with Link In, the software that nobody looks at. The, uh, Link In is a, um, all of the-
Fourth graders.
Fourth graders, thank you.
Sorry.
Are going to have recorders, and they will sit in with the symphony, and they will be playing those recorders along with the symphony in the Washington Pavilion, and we'll have them, there's so many of them, we'll have them onstage, surrounding the symphony and filling the hall, and that's during the day. And the conductor will work with them and discuss that and bring that experience to them. Unfortunately, it's going to be so full, the parents aren't going to be able to be there. It's just going to be kids and teachers and symphony. So, some great things happening with the South Dakota Symphony. Having come in from outside the city, that resource for our students is not typical of anywhere else in the state, and frankly, not all that typical anywhere else in the country to have the symphony willing to do that. Each visit that they send their quartets and quintets over costs them $1,000, and they're sending, sending them over there for months, okay? Now, the biggest thing we have going on this fall, every middle school music student who's in choir, orchestra, or band will be participating in this Electrify Your Symphony at the Denny Sanford Premier Center with Mark Wood of the Trans-Siberian Orchestra, and some of his players will be with that. He'll have eight of his musicians with us. Those musicians are spending three days in the school district doing a residency with our students, teaching them all this music to prepare for this concert on the 17th at the Sanford Center. It's the largest concert, Mark Wood does these concerts nationwide, primarily what he's doing now in the schools. This is the largest one he's ever done. Over 20, 2,600 students. We also have some spring students from the Gorman's, from the Sioux Falls Catholic Schools coming to join us in with it, join in with us on this. And that's the 17th, and you can see, there's been some information out on it, but there's more to come. We've sent these out to all the parents, also with ticket order forms. We will have complimentary tickets for the school board. If you'd like to go to that, we can give you two tickets to that, and we'd love to have you come. I've seen this concert before when he was in Aberdeen. He's absolutely fantastic, and their people are fantastic with the students. They get in there and work with them. Full lights, full sound, arena rock concert, rock orchestra for our students. And the idea is they, it's called electrified. They come out of there excited about playing their instruments. So, that's what we have going on. I should also mention, two of our high school marching bands this past weekend competed at a, what we call a super-regional marching band competition in St. Louis. I actually went down with one of them. And, um, the, it's a competition at a national level. Sioux Falls-Lincoln ended up in 19th place overall, out of 65, and Roosevelt was in the mid-40s somewhere. So it was very high-end competition. If you've seen those bands, you understand the level that that competition really was. The grand national champion was there, a band by the name of Broken Arrow out of Oklahoma. So, it was just fantastic for our students. So I hope you can make it on the 17th. This weekend is All-State Chorus and Orchestra here in town, and you're certainly welcome to be there, too, and I do have ticket, or will have tickets for you for that as well. I don't have them in hand yet, though. So, that's it. So if you have any questions, I'd love to talk anytime with you, and I hope I get a chance to meet everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Dan. We had a conflict with Patty Ward McGuire. The board has had the opportunity to review the conflict, and I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding the conflict? Hearing none? All those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I would ask for a motion for the supplemental cons, consent agenda 9A, claims against Sanford.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that's with abstention from Board Member Ryder. Supplement consent agenda 9B, claims against Averro.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. And that's with an abstention from Board Member Parker. Now on to the reports of the superintendent, Dr. Maher.
Thank you. We have four reports tonight from the superintendent. The first one will be our summer climb progress report, and our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ann Smith, will deliver that report.
Good evening. 171 students in grades K through 2 at Laura B. Anderson, Hawthorne, and Hayward Elementary Schools participated in the first of our three-year summer climb pilot. These students were selected based on their scores on certain academic assessments, the DRA, the Developmental Reading Assessment, the Add-Plus-Vantage Math Recovery Assessment, and then we used the NWEA MAP, Northwest Education Association's Measures of Academic Progress, as an additional tool. Students attended summer climb Monday through Thursday for eight weeks, or 32 days. They began June 11th. They arrived at school between 8:15 and 8:30 a.m., ate breakfast, and were engaged in physical activity, and then were engaged in their school day at 9 o'clock. Teachers focused on academic instruction in the morning, and then in the afternoon, it was opportunities to apply those concepts through field trips or other kinds of projects, more active learning things. The buses left at 4 o'clock. Student engagement and motivation during summer climb was high, as evidenced by behavior. I don't have a chart to show you behavior, because we had no behavior incidents at all during the entire summer climb experience. The average number of absences for summer climb, if we just look at the average for all students, 171, is shown in Table A. There were students who were outliers. Statistically, they missed enough more school than the other students. There were 10 of those students, three at kindergarten, five at first grade, and two at second grade. If we took those outliers out and recalculated the average, you can see that result in Table B. It did make a slight difference. Overall, when you consider that these students were attending for a full day the entire summer, we were pleased with the attendance that we had. How did the students do academically? To determine that, we used a nationally-normed assessment, the NWEA MAP. This particular assessment measures reading, language usage, and mathematics, and it's aligned with the South Dakota Content Standards. It's a computer-adaptive interim assessment. That means that the test adjusts itself to the student's ability. It's an interim assessment, which means it can be given more than once during the school year. This particular test can be given up to three times during the school year, and then once during the summer. Scores on the map are reported in terms of RAOCH units, or RIT score. Most people just talk about RIT score and wonder where they came up with RIT, but it stands for RAOCH units. So, looking at that score, that scale from the nationally-normed assessment, we can see that our students in math showed gains in kindergarten and first, from their pre-test in the spring to their post-test in the fall. From second to third grade, there's actually a slight decline. We'll talk about that. We'll take a quick look at the reading scores, and you'll see the same pattern, an increase from kindergarten to first, first to second, and then that slight decline from second to third. The test that's given in third grade is a, is a different version of the map. In kindergarten, first and second grade, they take the map for primary grades. It has an auditory component, so that this, the test is actually read to the students, and it also is focusing on early numeracy and early literacy. Then, at third grade, you be, you give the map, which is actually focused on academic content standards and no longer has that read aloud. So that, it's a slightly different version. So, did it make a difference, or didn't it? How do we interpret all of that? We look at how did students nationally do on the map assessment, and how do we compare the growth that we saw of our students attending summer climb to those students who didn't attend summer climb? We get to have a sense of, did it make a difference, or didn't it make a difference? So, in math, we saw gains from kindergarten to first grade and first to second grade, and actually, first to second grade, nearly twice the gains were made in math by students who attended summer climb as compared to their non-attending peers, which is the middle bar, the, the orange bar on our chart. If you compare that to what we see nationally in the national norm, you would actually expect to see a slight decline from first to second grade in math from spring to fall. So this would suggest that from first to second grade, we really were seeing some very nice achievement in math. If you go to our second to third grade, again, you see the decline. The decline is there at the national level. It was a more significant decline in our non-attending peers than it was for our students attending summer climb. We are checking with NWEA because this different version of the test, when you look at the national norms, included in that national norm may be students who are already taking the regular map at second grade. So that may be why you see a decline from first to second grade in the national norm. Those are some of the things that we have to investigate. You start getting data, and it just starts sparking more questions. But, we can say that we did see greater growth in our, in our students who attended summer climb from spring to fall in math. Our reading results are not quite as clean and definitive. We see nice growth, again, at that first to second grade. Need to see what's happening longitudinally, because our non-attending peers actually did better on this fall assessment than they did it in the spring assessment. That's not what you would expect to see typically because of the summer, summer, summer learning loss. You would expect to see what's happening at the national level, where you see a decline at all three grades from spring to fall. We will continue to give the map this year, again in January, and then again in May. We'll continue, continue to monitor these students' progress, because we don't, we don't know how this is going to affect them if you look at it longitudinally. We may have been laying the foundation that then is going to take off, and we'll see greater increases as the years go on. Our staff will be using this data as they reexamine their instruction to determine how we might want to revamp what, how the instructional day looks this next summer. We'll also be increasing the class size just a little bit, so that we'll accept 30 students in each grade level, so that we should have about 100 more students participating this next summer than we had this, this summer. With that, I would ask that the board would acknowledge the summer climb progress report.
Any questions, Fran?
I would just add, I think it's, it's good if we, you know, we did see some good results, so if we can get more students to be able to participate, we can have an impact on more of those students' lives, and like you said, hopefully longitudinally see some of those gains pick up as maybe their confidence builds, or their skill level builds, and we can kind of tweak the topics that are taught in the summer to make them the most effective for those students. So, I think for the first year, we can be very proud of the results and excited about the things that the students did learn, and it's a good opportunity to review that and, and make some changes for next summer, too.
Yeah, I think we'll know more about these kids holistically as they move. You know, a test, it's good information, but it's one day, you know, who knows what kind of day they're having, not making excuses, you know, because a lot of the stuff did move up, but it's, it's just one piece of it. I think your gut level has to tell you that, you know, these kids are, are making progress being in school during, during the summer, which if they weren't, they would probably be sliding backwards, or, and certainly, they're probably more excited about school, and so I think, you know, on a longer-term basis, we'll see the fruits of that, but nonetheless, it's good to measure it, so.
All right. We have a motion to acknowledge the summer climb progress report.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, you've seen the preliminary K through 12 fall enrollment report. Now back for the, the real enrollment report is Michael Christopherson.
Thanks for the opportunity to provide you the latest student enrollment numbers. The numbers for the fall enrollment are based on FTEs, whole-time equivalents, for the last Friday in September. This year, that happened to fall on September 30th, which is the day we report our numbers to the state for funding purposes. The state then verifies that all students are accurately represented with the appropriate enrollment percentage, especially those students have, who have representation in multiple schools. We continue to see growth in enrollment numbers this year as a district. First, I'd like to look at the K5. We have increased by 146 students for a total of 11,765 students, which is a 1.2% increase from last year. In the middle schools, we are up 4.1% compared to this time last year, with an additional 214 students, giving us a total of 5,210 students in sixth through eighth grade. Finally, the high school enrollment took a small increase of 21 students for a total of 6,680 students, and a 0.3% increase. Therefore, our initial K-12 enrollment number as of Friday, September 30th was 23,655 students, which is up 1.61% over last year. The pre-K student count also continues to rise with an increase of 51 students, providing us with a total of 1,120 students. That's a 4.6% increase over last year. The sum of the total of pre-K and K-12 is 24,775 students. Turning it over to the line graph. The following line graph is just a quick visual representation of our initial, of our K-12 total enrollment from the past five years. The percentages you see on the graph are based on the increased percentage over the previous year's numbers. As you can see, we continue steady growth as a district, and increase at a higher percentage this year than the previous year. Turning to the fall enrollment history, going a little farther back in history, we can see that we have 3,841 more students than we did in 2006, 2007, and we have 5,561 more students than in the '96, '97 school year. So putting that into perspective for you, in 20 years, we have gained more students than the total enrollment at any South Dakota school besides Sioux Falls and Rapid City. So just in that 20 years, we've gained more students than any other district besides enrollment at Sioux Falls and Rapid. We also have even more students wanting to our school- We also have even more students wanting to our schools that live outside the district boundaries with a total of 1,120 students opening enrollment into the district. Now turn to the 2016 ethnicity by level report. I'm not going to steal Deanne's thunder because she's right after me here with the actual demographics report, but quick look at ethnic diversity within the Sioux Falls School District. We continue to see ethnic diversity change at all grade levels. District-wide, we have seen the following shifts in these ethnic groups. Percentage of Asian students took a .1% decrease over last year to 3.5%. The percentage of Black students has slightly increased from 10.8% to 11.3%. Percentage of Hispanic students are up from 9.5% to 10.3%. Native American percentage is slightly down from 4.5% to 4.4%. Student percentage of multiracial ethnicity is slightly up from 4.7% to 5.1%, while Pacific Islander students have remained the same at .1%. Finally, the percentage of the white ethnicity students has also decreased percentage-wise with a 1.5% decrease from 66.8% to 65.3%. Now turning to the enrollment history by ethnicity. Taking a historical look at ethnicity in the Sioux Falls School District, we can compare back as far as 1991 and see the various changes that encompass our ethnic diversity of the district. With these changes come great opportunities to understand perspectives of children from different backgrounds and learn to function in a multicultural, multi-ethnic environment. As Sioux Falls public schools becomes more diverse, demands increase to find the most effective ways of accomplishing our mission to educate and prepare each student to succeed in the changing world. I would ask the board to acknowledge the fall student enrollment report and would welcome any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Michael?
Quick question.
Sure.
Do you do a breakdown, looking at the 1,120 students that come from out of district, do we find that it's more common at the elementary level, is it the high school level? I'm thinking about places like Rosa Parks where the Brandon School District is so close. Do we find that people are open enrolling at elementary and then sending their kids to Brandon for middle and high school when they've got busing and that's where their neighbors go? Or do we see things like that on the edges of town? Or are there certain schools or programs that typically have higher open enrollment than others?
Sure. For this report, we didn't really break it down that far. I know maybe Jamie wants to jump in here on what you've seen. I know you've talked about it in some of our meetings.
And if you don't have specifics, that's, I was just curious. When I look at that number, it seems like a lot of students.
We, we do, off the top of my head, will I be able to say it? No, because we do look at that, obviously, with the breakdown of the FTE and Todd when the numbers come out and the, you know, at the time we're doing the budgeting for teachers and FTEs. So, we would know that off the top of my head, no. I'd know the high school enrollment of that right off, but I don't know the elementary and middle school right off, no.
I'm just thinking like pedigree and, you know, like the ones that are on the edge, do they tend to attract? And then do we lose them when they go to like their community, middle or high schools? Or do they stick it out the whole time?
I would not venture to say we lose them on that. Where the biggest draw would be at is at the high school or middle or elementary, I'm not sure.
And the data is not quite complete for this year from the state. But if we look at the prior year, we had 1,069 students that came in versus the 1,120 this year, so we are gaining. But last year, we can also see how many students we lost to other districts, and that's at 458 students. So we have about a 2.33 to 1 ratio. So for every one student we lose, we're gaining 2.33 students.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Hearing none, may I please have a motion to acknowledge the fall 2016 enrollment report?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Next with our district demographics report is Deanne Conrad.
Good evening. Michael had such wonderful graphs. Now I'm going to put some pictures to that graph and, to those graphs and share with you the 2016 district demographic report. While I have the honor of presenting this report, it should be noted that the entire Sioux Falls School District staff collaborates to provide this report to you this evening. Many of the data points have been presented to you previously in other board reports, but this is an opportunity to see a snapshot of our school district in one place at one time. This is also the PowerPoint presentation that we take to many community groups who are curious about the makeup of our school district and want to know more in hopes of perhaps helping and supporting students in a variety of ways. We start right at the beginning with our mission statement. Of course, to educate and prepare each student to succeed in the changing world. Our vision is also there for folks to see. It's a little more detailed, talking about our commitment to highly-trained and committed workforce, continually evaluating and improving our own and student performance. And the district recognizes its role as a key contributor to the social, civic, and economic foundation of this community. And we truly believe that and have many wonderful partners in our community that help us provide a high-quality education to our students. As noted, our enrollment is currently 23,655. That's up 381 students. We took a look back to the 10-year timeframe and that data point from 2006, 2007 shows 19,814, so a good growth, a good consistent growth over time. And we're, we're proud to have that growth where other, many other school districts in the state are not seeing that type of growth in their student populations. As Michael noted, our white population is 65.3%, while we are ethnically diverse at 34.7%. And this continues to demonstrate an ongoing shift toward greater diversity. It is a shift of 1.5% over last year. And for the last probably 20 years, we've been shifting somewhere between 1% and 2% through those 20 years. Looking at another special population, our student demographics in the area of special education. We educate 3,318 students in the special education. That is 14.3% makeup of our K-12 enrollment. And again, that five-year trend remains the same for the number of special education students that we're serving. Due to some growth in a few other neighboring school districts, we have slipped, if you will, to the seventh-largest in our population of special education students. If our population was a school district by itself, we would now be considered the seventh-largest school district behind our own. Rapid City, Aberdeen, Watertown, Harrisburg, and Brandon Valley have crept up there. And then our special education population in Sioux Falls School District. And we are pleased to have these students with us and provide the care and education that they need. Next, we added a slide in here to share with you the changes that have created quite a bit of an impact. Again, this is information you've had previously, but amendments to the Americans with Disabilities Act has broadened the definition of students who can qualify for a 504 plan. So just to provide some updated information to you, 1,324 students are eligible for a 504 plan. And Molly Satter, our 504 coordinator, is diligently working to process more paperwork. And so we believe that number will increase from 1,324. In February, she provided you a report and at that time, the number was 1,203 students who had a 504 plan. And looking back prior to the change in the definition of 504 qualifications, in 2012, approximately 70 students had a 504 plan. So that is a significant change and one that has, you know, increased processes and had us really looking at those needs and making sure that we're meeting student needs. Student demographics in the area of our English language learners. We are currently serving 2,072 students in English language learners. We also added a bit of information here to provide some perspective as to how that number continues to grow. For the 15, 16 school year, the state of South Dakota provided additional funding for 1,151 students who's, who were scoring below a four on the WEDA access test. And the WEDA access test is a point of gauging how well the student is doing and when they're ready to enter traditional education in a, in a less supportive classroom environment, more along with their peers. The prior year, that was 1,114 students. So again, you see that the number has increased. While we stay at about the 2,000 level with our, our students with English language learner needs, we are also being funded at a higher rate for those students, meaning we have more who have not, have not gotten through the WEDA access test at a score of four or higher. We currently have 86 languages spoken in the homes of our students. That number on any given day can fluctuate and has from upper 70s to into the 80s. Our friend Anne Smith did some searching and provided me some information regarding our top languages in the district. Of course, English is our top language with 22,030 students speaking English. 1,404 are speaking Spanish. 325 have a home language of Nepali. 206 speak Tagrena. Did I say that correctly, Anne? Tagrena. And then rounding out the top five is Amarek, 198 students. Following that, Swahili, Arabic, Somali, and French. So thanks to Anne for putting those numbers together. Turning now to our staff, 3,328 regularly scheduled staff members. That's how many people it takes every day to run our schools. Everyone from the morning custodians to the teachers, the lunch, the child nutrition workers, and also the Kids Inc. workers after school in order to provide that quality after school care. 64% of our teachers have a master's degree or beyond. 1,799 of our total staff numbers, that's 54%, are in the teacher category. Our certified staff hires over the past couple of years remain in that area between 160 with a high of 182 last year. Our free and reduced numbers district-wide total 44.3%. Of course, we've probably all heard that data point that we are closer to 50%. And here's where, oh, I'm sorry that this, it was fine before. I apologize for that. The elementary number is 49.8%. The middle school number is 42.8%. And high school, 35.4%. You can see those numbers are, the middle school number is up slightly. The elementary and the middle school numbers are down just slightly. As we've said many times before, we believe the elementary number to be indicative of the total student population because many times when students get middle school or high school, they are not filling out the paperwork for, for the free or reduced lunches as they may decide to run to the convenience store and, and get a pop or not eat at all or, or what have you. So, there's also open lunch at the high school as well. So, our truest best number, we believe, is the 49.8%. And you just recently received information regarding ACT scores from Demi Moon. Here is a snapshot once again, Sioux Falls at 22.9, South Dakota students coming in at 21.9, while the national average is 21.1. Our students faring well and a full point above their South Dakota peers. In the area of advanced placement, again, 70.7% for our students in Sioux Falls, those scoring three or higher in South Dakota. The number is 64.5, while the nation sits at 60.5%. 39% of all juniors and seniors in the Sioux Falls School District are enrolled in at least one AP course. Of those, 84% of AP students took the exam. And the Sioux Falls School District currently represents 58% of all exams taken in South Dakota. So definitely a flag to fly in our, our hat that we're up there with the AP results. And it is a growing program and a wonderful program at our high schools. And then our graduation rate, as you've heard many times before in talking about the strategic plan, this is a point that we do intend to have some, some key areas of focus on our graduation rate. Our four-year cohort graduation rate is 80.6%. The four-year cohort graduates plus students who continue beyond four years, plus students who completed GED, that number sits at 86.7%. And we are actively developing programs and processes to increase our graduation rate as part of the district's strategic plan. So that wraps up the 2016 demographic report. Are there any questions I can answer for any of you? Otherwise, if not, I would ask that you acknowledge the informational report on the 2016 demographic report.
Any questions for Deanne?
It's just nice to have everything in one spot. We've gotten reports this, this, and this, but it's nice to have one location to capture all. Thank you.
May I please have a motion to acknowledge the informational report on the district...
Second.
Any discussion?
If you'll allow me just a second to maybe kind of put a bow on the enrollment report, the demographic report. You think about it, there, I think there's some key things that are drawn out from the information that we've seen. One is over the last 25 years, we were at, what, about 15,000 students, wasn't it in 1990? Michael, am I, do I have that right? I've got it here, too. I guess I could have looked. Yeah, so, so about 8,000 student enrollment over the last 25 years. When you break that down from a ethnicity standpoint, 25 years ago in the fall of 1991, we had 5.6% of our students who were non-white. Today, we have 34.7% of our students who are non-white. We, we've grown and it's, in our, our demographic, our student makeup has changed. Languages, 86, you saw that out on there, 86 languages. Our socioeconomic status, no matter which level you look at, I find interesting that over the last 10 years, it's about a 12% increase in socioeconomic diversity, the diversity of socioeconomic students in our school district. And then you just think of the pure numbers that we have today versus we had 10 years ago or 25 years ago. We shared some of these statistics with our peers throughout the Midwest at a conference we were at last week. And the first thing we heard were, well, you have some challenges. And I think that's true, but I would say I think we have some real opportunities. Real opportunities as a district when we throw in the divert, the increase in diversity from an ethnicity standpoint, when you throw in the diversity in our student population from a socioeconomic standpoint, when you throw in the number of, the number of students with disabilities that we have the opportunity to serve, and you throw in just the pure number of students that we get to serve, it's truly an opportunity, I think, that we have as a school system to serve that, just that increasing population in our community. That's it.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, our last report of the evening is the quarterly finance report given to you from Todd Beek.
Thank you, Dr. Maher. It's, September marked the end of the first quarter for the fiscal year, which started in July, but we're really only about 1/12th of the way at that time through the school year. So, as you see in your board materials, we, on the revenue side, we only received about 11.35% of it, even though we're a fourth of the way through the fiscal year. And on the expenditure side, in the general fund, it was... And on the expenditure side, in the general fund, it was only at 13.92%. What I can tell you, as far as projections go, is our salaries and benefits are a large part of it, and we're about, about on track with where we thought we'd be with the delta. Of course, you know, it's about a 6.82%, or I'm sorry, 8.02% increase in salaries. That's about what we thought with the delta that it would be. On the revenue side, with the earlier report from Michael, I can tell you that we're about 645,000 to the good on state aid this year. We came in over 100 kids above projection and slightly above projection on ELL students, which we get a little bit of an increase for that as well. So we're close to 650,000 to the good on that, very large part of our revenue source. The other revenues, let's wait till February to get a feel for where those are at. On the special ed side, again, they're only 13.36% of the way through the year on revenues and 9.89% on expenditures. We knew what their state, we knew what the, the state aid for SPED is based on their December child count, so we knew what that was. So that large revenue source, we should be about right on with that. The only other thing I'd point out is capital outlay. We had projected zero inflation and .1% growth in property values, not, or new construction, not your house going up, but, but a new house being added to a neighborhood. We came in about .2%, so that's a little higher than budgeted. .2%, I mean, two, two tenths of that, I'm sorry, not, it's 1% and 2%. .2% of the additional 1% was the add-on of cherry cream. So about .8, if you know, above projection, if you don't count that. So like I said, very, it's very early in the year. We don't know a lot, but I told you about everything we know. So I'd stand by for questions.
Any questions for Todd? Hearing none, may I have a motion to acknowledge your report of the district's FY '17 first-quarter financials?
I move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Thank you, Todd.
And I move that we go into executive session per South Dakota codified law 1-25-21.